Well, welcome everyone. I call this meeting of the City Council of the City of Atascadero to order, and I will ask Councilmember Newsom to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag,
To the flag.
The United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the republic
Republic.
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible
indivisible.
With liberty
liberty.
And justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Portemborbeau?
Here.
Mayor Moreno?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, if you're watching or listening to the City Council meeting tonight, we welcome you. If you would like to speak at a time that is set aside for community forum or during public comment for one of the items on our agenda, you can call 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. And when you call, please let us know which item it is that you would like to speak on. Once again, that number tonight to provide public comment is 805-538-2888. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Mayor Portemborbeau?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we have one presentation this evening. We are going to have a proclamation proclaiming October 2020 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I will ask our city clerk, do we have someone from RISE that is here? Well, I guess to sort of virtually receive the proclamation?
That I'm not sure. We had originally had discussions and someone was excited about being that presentation, but we never did get confirmation that I'm aware of that someone was attending.
Okay.
Is someone on there? Can we ask if they'll raise their hand or let us know that they're here?
Yes, that would be great. So if you are here to sort of receive the proclamation, you're from RISE and you're representing, please raise your hand on the webinar because we would love to bring you on. And while we're doing that, I've asked Mayor Portemborbeau to read the proclamation. Charles has been previously on the board of RISE and has, I know, given a lot to that organization. So I think it would be nice to have him present that this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation of the City of Atascadero for October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in Atascadero, and whereas domestic violence continues to be a major national public health problem affecting one in three women and one in nine men, with an estimated 15 million children witnessing domestic violence in their homes each year. And whereas among families, domestic violence is a leading cause of homelessness in the United States, and whereas children exposed to domestic violence often experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, and serious adult health problems. And whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities, increases their vulnerability to intimate partner violence. And whereas RISE continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by domestic violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. And whereas RISE has provided services to more than 1,000 clients in the last year, including more than 600 collective nights provided for shelter clients and more than 2,500 hours of counseling. And whereas the City of Atascadero strongly supports the efforts of RISE, which helps enable every segment of our society to work together in order to better address intimate partner violence, to connect survivors with services. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, the City Council of the City of Atascadero does hereby proclaim the month of October to be National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Signed by Mayor Heather Moreno.
Thank you, Charles. Luke, did we have anyone raise their hand who would like to receive this and maybe say a few words?
Doesn't look like anybody's raised their hand.
Okay. Well, we appreciate the work of RISE and other organizations like it. It is much needed and they do so much good work in our community. And there are so many different events and things that I know all of us have supported over the years. And just thank you so much. And maybe next year, when we're in the real world and on this virtual thing, we'll be face-to-face again, but thank you so much. So we'll move on to our consent calendar. All of the items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial by city staff. And they'll be approved in one motion if there's no member of the council or the public that wishes to comment or ask questions. So if comment or discussion is desired by anyone, we will go ahead and remove that from the consent calendar and it will be considered in the listed sequence as an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council concerning the item before action is taken. So with that, I will look to the council and is there anyone wishing to pull an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, Luke, I will ask, is there anybody on the webinar or on the call who would like to pull a consent calendar item?
There is not.
Okay. And Laura, did we receive any comments regarding the consent calendar via email?
We have not.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Fonzie and a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Portemborbeau?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we are now on to update from our city manager, Ms. Rickard. We can't hear you, Rochelle.
Darn mute button. Sorry about that.
Wonderful.
Yes. I do want to tell you about a couple of new businesses that are here in town. The Human Bean Coffee Shop is now open at 7835 El Comune Real, just north of Curb Earl Avenue and across from Fashion Cleaners. This is a project that went up very quickly and Laura was telling me today how good it was. So glad to have them here in town. Panda Express is also open in the Vaughn Shopping Center near Rite Aid. I went there today, very COVID-friendly and a wonderful addition here in Atascadero. So stop by and give them a try.
You muted yourself again.
Sorry about that. So A-Town Skate Park is now open every weekday after 2:00 p.m. and 12:00 noon on the weekends. So they are back open. All appropriate COVID safety guidelines are being followed, which include requiring that the skaters bring their own certified helmets, using hand sanitizer upon entering, practicing safe social distancing, and wearing face coverings if not skating. In addition, the outdoor skate park is currently undergoing maintenance updates with a plan to be open within the next couple of weeks. Due to the limited attendance requirements, advanced reservations are required. So be sure to visit the A-Town Park website. So we have a new fun event this week. It is, we've traditionally had a night out with Atascadero Police and Fire. We are doing that with a drive-through. So tomorrow evening, that's Wednesday, October 28th, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. downtown at Colony Square next to the Galaxy Theater. Come for a safe and socially-distanced night out to meet the officers of Atascadero Police and Fire and other public safety partners. Enjoy Police Canine presentation, see the terrific fire prevention video that everyone's been talking about, then watch the Halloween movie Hocus Pocus and share in the entire experience safely from the privacy of your own vehicle. Plus, you can order food and beverages from the surrounding Colony Square restaurants by calling in advance or when you arrive and then pick up your food when it's ready. Participating restaurants include Round Table Pizza, Slow Doco, Wild Fields Brew House, and K-Pasa. And Galaxy Theater will be open for concessions all evening, so you won't miss out on your popcorn for the movie. The event starts at 5:30. The parking lot area will open at 5:15. And all spaces are on a first-come, first-served basis. So don't be late. A very special thank you to our sponsors for this event, Atascadero Chamber of Commerce, Fun Flicks, Starbucks, and Slow Doco Donuts for helping make this event possible. So this is a free event to community members and a great night out. And then a quick reminder for safe and fun Halloween activity. Our Recreation Division is having a virtual pumpkin carving contest. Carve your best jack-o'-lantern and email a photo of it to recreation@atascadaro.org by 5:00 p.m. on October 30th. All ages can participate and all of the pumpkins will be showcased on our Rec Division's social media on Halloween. We also have a virtual costume contest at the Charles Paddock Zoo. So get dressed up in your best Halloween costume and come to the zoo to take a photo in front of our photo op display, then send me your picture in. All ages are welcome and there is a group category also. And of course, our Halloween spectacular drive-by by our own Mark Russo. His house is located at 7720 Cortez Avenue, just off Curb Earl Avenue, and can be seen every night through Halloween from 7:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. with extra special effects promised for Halloween night. So that is a driveway. So details for drive-by, so details for all city events can be found on any of our Facebook event pages or on our virtual recreation page or on our website at atascadero.org. And of course, what comes right after Halloween, we enter our holiday season, so it's not too early to be talking about our annual holiday boutique. Our 15th Annual Holiday Boutique will be held outdoors this year at the Atascadero Lake Park on Saturday, November 14th. All craft vendors that are interested in signing up to sell at the event need to mail us at pavilion@atascadaro.org by no later than October 30th. And that's a wonderful event and will be opened to the public. If you missed some of those websites that I gave, feel free to call City Hall. We can get you pointed in the right direction and get you the information also. And the last thing I want to remind people is the Atascadero Residential Waste Drop-Off at Chicago Grade Landfill ends this Saturday, October 31st. So that's the last day that you can get your voucher and bring your trash to the dump. And this is in lieu of our typical residential waste drop-off day. So you can bring up to one load free to the dump with that voucher. And you call 805-466-3636 to request a voucher. And that's from Waste Management. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
We have any questions of the city manager? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Rickard.
Thank you.
Appreciate the report. So we'll move on to community forum. And community forum is a portion of our meeting that is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on items that are under our purview but are not on the agenda this evening. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation. Any comments that are made during community forum will not be a subject of discussion. We'll triage some things if we can, but we can't discuss them here this evening. A maximum of 30 minutes will be allowed for community forum. And any members of the public who have questions or need information may always contact the city clerk's office between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, at 805-470-3400 or cityclerk@atascadaro.org. And with that, I will ask if we have any callers or folks on the webinar that would like to speak at community forum?
Yes, we have one caller, Jeff Osslin.
Good evening, council and folks from the city. This is Jeff Osslin. I'm just wanting to remind our council and our city officials that I'm hoping to see the drive-through policy brought back to council, hopefully sometime in November, to be reviewed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osslin. And I do see that we have Mr. Seabock who would like to speak. Luke, do you see him?
Jerry, go ahead and unmute your mic. You're free to speak.
Thank you, Luke. Can you hear me, Heather?
Yes, we can, Jerry.
And the rest, obviously. Thank you. I was not able to attend your last meeting, but what I wanted to do was commend the council for the adoption of the resolution committing to being a safe, inclusive, and welcoming community and voluntary action to redact or repudiate racist deed verbiage. Now, everybody knows our city is not perfect. We're not very diverse. We still have issues. But I think our city has come a long way and this is a good step that you have made and it shows something that we can be proud of, I think. Just relating to, in my own experience, my family moved to Atascadero in the early 1960s. I was just a young teenager. And there were very few, if any, African-American families in Atascadero at that time. I got to know one, a very nice family. Originally through Boy Scouts, then through church, and then through politics. And they were very good friends and people that we could be proud of in this community. But it was many years before I heard their story of how they came to Atascadero in the early 1950s. The father was a physician. He'd been hired to work at the old Atascadero County Hospital up on the hill. Even the doctors at that hospital did not want him. They said it would be trouble having a colored, they called them in those days, doctor. They tried to find a place to live in Atascadero and they had very difficult time. They could not buy anything. No one would even wanted to rent to them. And finally, they were able to find a place to live and they became a very important part of this community. And the doctor practiced for the rest of his career, mostly taking care of poor and underinsured folks. For many years, delivered lots of children. And I was proud to know them. And that just, I'm just saying, things have changed. Thank goodness, we have more now and we have you guys taken this step. As I said, I commend you for adopting this resolution. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Seabock. Luke, do we have anyone else on the line or on the webinar that would like to speak?
We have two on the webinar. Our first is Josh Cross.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Josh Cross. I'm the interim president and CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. And I am looking forward to a night out tomorrow night. I will be here in front of the Chamber of Commerce and we will be handing out bottles of water for everyone for free. So stop by and say hi. I'd love to meet everyone. The second thing I'd like to talk to everyone about is an upcoming event that is next Wednesday, November 4th. It's our very first ATOX event. ATOX is a hybrid happy hour mixer and community information get-together. We are going to have an opportunity for some networking. Go hear some updates from the chamber. We're going to have the county health representatives talking about getting to orange, that next color in our wheel of colors. We're going to have an in-person visits video with Angela Cisneros, your jewelry concierge, and we'll have a brief update from SCORE. So it should be a good afternoon. Again, it's from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. next Wednesday. And we are also partnering with Central Coast Distillery to prepare cocktail kits for you to enjoy your happy hour with. So for $25, you get three cocktails and super chicken nachos to wash that cocktail down. So I encourage the community to join us. You can sign up at the chamber's website, atascaderochamber.org. And I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Luke, who's our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Gina Soraco in the webinar. Gina, I see you've also called. We'll give her a shot here in the webinar first.
Okay, I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. I'd like to speak to the homeless and what the plans are for this winter. And I would like to commend Echo for hosting a warming shelter in the community. But I'm extremely concerned for the location that they selected this year. They are planning on opening up on November 1st, what was originally touted as a warming shelter and is now going to be a homeless shelter at the Community Church of Atascadero, which is in a residential area that's really dark and doesn't have streetlights. I would like to thank Rochelle for hosting a community meeting that after the neighbors found out that a homeless shelter was going to be put in in the beginning of September, they did try to put together a meeting for the community, the church, and Echo to kind of answer some of our questions and concerns. But a lot of the concerns that the neighbors raised were not really addressed completely and were kind of brushed aside and saying it's not really going to be an issue. So I think we definitely need a homeless shelter, but the location is dangerous for the community and for the people that it's going to serve. The parking lot is extremely dark. Even with the lights that they've put up, it's still really dark. There's four entrances, which is surrounded by multiple homes with children and single women. And there's no fencing between some of the properties of the church and the homes of the people that are going to be there. Echo is going to have two regular staff and two volunteers that will be there. But we have concerns that they will have proper medical and psychiatric training to deal with any emergencies that may arise. We have concerns that people who don't get into the shelter for the night will still be in the neighborhood during the evening and throughout the day, causing dangers to the residents, which has been reported at the other neighborhoods where the other shelters have been housed. And I'm really concerned about the public health aspects and whether or not they're following the protocols. So I would really like to have the city at least ensure that they're doing proper CDC guidelines and making sure that it's truly safe and secure before they allow them to open up and have a means for us to have communications if there are issues that arise. And I see I'm out of time, so thank you for allowing me to speak. And I hope that we can find
Thank you, Mr. Soraco.
A good location that would serve more than 25 people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Luke, do we have any other callers or anyone on the webinar wishing to speak tonight?
We do not. Those are all our speakers for now.
Thank you. And then I will ask our city clerk, do we have any emails that we received to be read into the record for community forum?
I do have one. Dear Mayor and City Council members, first, we would like to express our understanding that there is a need for a warming center in Atascadero. That said, we are writing to voice our concern in regard to the warming center, emergency shelter that Echo will be opening at the start of November in the Fellowship Hall of the Atascadero Community Church. The location in a residential neighborhood in close proximity to homes with many families with young children is not appropriate. Additionally, the location is open with multiple entrances and exits to and from the hall that cannot be monitored for safety. We have additional concerns that have not been addressed from the feedback we have received from Echo and the church about how the program will be run in regards to safety of the neighborhood, the safety of the volunteers, the safety of the people being sheltered, the lack of security beyond volunteers, and the safety of those that may be milling around who may not be able to get into the shelter for the night. We have been disappointed that Echo and the church have been considering the use of this Fellowship Hall as first a warming center and now an emergency shelter since August and did not reach out to any neighbors in the community until two weeks ago. While the city did organize a Zoom meeting for the neighborhood, most residents had just heard about the discussion two days prior and were unable to attend. We are also concerned about the lack of a public process and neighbors around the church have volunteered to help with looking at alternate locations, additional safety procedures, and further discussion. Instead, the residents surrounding the church are being told what will happen and there is no collaboration. We recommend that an alternate location for the shelter be considered and that the city council consider this for an agenda item at the next city council meeting. Thank you, Eric and Kristy Wilkins. And that's the only comment received.
Okay, thank you, Laura. And then I will ask Luke one more time. Is there anybody on the phone or on the webinar that would like to speak?
There is not.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close community forum and bring it back to council and staff. So I would ask that Jeff Osslin's point about the drive-through policy that we do get that on, and I think Rochelle, maybe if you could let me know, we were planning on looking at that next month. I think we talked about that a couple of months ago.
I believe we had talked, yeah, I can go back and look and get something.
Okay. But that is something I know we all committed to. So let's figure out what works with the upcoming calendar soon and make sure we let him know. And thanks to Mr. Seabock for his comments and sharing that story with us. And yes, we think this was a good start too. And you know, the chamber is doing a lot of good work with their diversity council. And I feel like this was a nice kind of supplement to that. And we really appreciate what they're doing and look forward to more from them. And thank you to Mr. Cross. That sounds like a lot of fun. And then I will ask our city manager to address the warming center issue.
Yes. Let me start with the city's role in the warming shelter. The warming shelter or the emergency shelter, it is proposed to go every night from November 1st through December 31st. And then depending on funding, will operate in the spring. Anyway, the use of a church is allowed for a warming shelter or a homeless shelter is allowed and does not require a CUP or other city review in this particular instance. This is a church that was established prior to city incorporation. It is an existing land use. It does not have any conditions on it that prohibit the use of it as a homeless. that prohibit the use of it as a homeless shelter and has been in fact used as a homeless shelter in the past. Therefore, there is no ability for the city to go to a property owner, in this case, a church, and say, hey, we want to, we want to regulate an existing use that you have. You have to come before the city council. And so by existing use, the right to that existing use, not necessarily they have to be using it. So there's a number of reasons that the city cannot review it, cannot require them to come before the city council. That being said, we have an interest in ensuring that people can be good neighbors as best we can. We have been talking and working with Echo and the Atascadero Community Church, who has volunteered to house the warming shelter this year to try and put some protections in place to address the neighbor's concern. We've also talked with the police department to make sure that they are doing extra patrols in the area and are very present. It's very close to our police station, so that's good. But they will be doing some extra patrols and being very present in the neighborhood to try and discourage any of the illegal behaviors that are of concern to the neighbor. We are also working with them. I know they had some desire to look at different fencing and closing off some of those entrances. We're trying to work with them on that to make sure that we're still providing enough fire access, but also are addressing some of the neighbor's concerns. So we will continue to work with Echo and the community church. But it is a discussion. The city cannot mandate that they do, take any particular actions. However, they've been very cooperative in trying to take take measures to help mitigate some of the concerns.
Rochelle, do you know if there's going to be another meeting for the neighbors? It sounds like maybe some of them didn't know about it or couldn't make it. Is there maybe another one for the church and Echo to be able to say, here's what we've done? What are you still concerned about? What are we not, what are we missing? Something like that?
I am not aware of any other meetings planned. They wouldn't necessarily have to involve the city. This was just one that, you know, we talked about and thought it would be a good idea to, that we could help facilitate it. I know that they are encouraging phone calls and conversations to have some of those. If there are specific actions that a neighbor would like to see, like, hey, you know, some of the actions that they are doing, can you consider this? Can you do that type of thing? That they're willing to talk with neighbors.
And I just, I want the neighbors to know, we've been hearing from all of you or many of you, all of us have been. And we understand your concerns. And I know you've heard what the city manager has said about what we can or cannot do is more like it. From everything I know of Pastor Heather Branton and of Wendy Lewis at Echo, they are more than willing to talk with anybody, to work with neighbors, and really make sure that they are good neighbors. And so please do reach out to them. I know they want to hear from you and I know that they are concerned for your well-being too. So please do that. Councilmember Funk?
Yes. Could the city manager briefly address the question with regard to COVID safety and how the COVID protocols are being, that setup is being supervised?
So the, it's my understanding that Echo has been working very hard on the COVID protocols with the county health department to make sure that they are doing everything they can and they are following the guidelines and mandates on congregate care plus putting in extra measures that are necessary. Again, the city does not go into or have the right to go into and force ourselves into a place to look and monitor those COVID protocols. But we can certainly ask if, you know, when Echo is willing to share them or allow us in to look at them and we could do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Rochelle. All right. And with that, I think we are on to our next item. We have one public hearing this evening and that is Community Facilities District Annexation, numbers 21 and 22, one at Kerberell Avenue and the other on El Camino. And I will start by asking if we have any expertise on this item. Seeing none, and just for you, the public expertise is us letting you know if we've had any conversations outside of this public process that might influence our decision. And so none of us have had any expertise on this. And so I will now turn this over to our community development director, Phil Dunsborough, who will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Let me get the right screen up for you. I always have difficulty doing this as I scroll through my view on here. Let me just get that correct screen up for you. All right. Let's see if that's it. Is that the right screen? Are you looking at the presentation there? You're not? Okay, let's try that again. Oh, let's try that again. Let's get going on that Community Facilities District. And we'll talk about those two projects here. Let's get that rolling. Let's try that one.
There we go.
There we go. All right, I'm in there. Good evening, council. Tonight, what we're looking at is two separate residential projects. They have both come to you previously. We looked at the introduction of these Community Facilities District. But let me give you a little background just for the public's purpose too on Community Facilities District and what they are. And when they were established, starting back in 2005, we established the first essential Community Facilities District in the city, 2005-1. And essentially, looking at the background, the state allows us to develop these districts to provide a financial mechanism to assess new properties that will receive services. And the overall intent is so that we can get closer to fiscal neutrality for residential projects. Now, anytime we have a residential project that goes through what we call a discretionary process, in other words, it goes through a conditional use permit or a subdivision map or a plan development, we provide conditions that require this fiscal neutrality. And in these two particular projects, they both went through a process and they both had project conditions to get us closer to fiscal neutrality as required by our fiscal plan for our city. In this case, that methodology was to annex these into the Community Facilities District, which provides for a small annual tax that helps us continue to provide services. So there are two projects that we're looking at tonight. The first one is noted as A on your particular agenda item there is a small four-unit plan development. It's right on Kerberell Avenue. It's sort of adjacent to the Shell gas station just north of Morrow Road there. Four single-family homes that are about to be developed and not developed yet on this site. The property owners seeking construction permits to do that. And tonight would be actually doing the vote on the Community Facilities District for that. The second one is already starting construction. That's the Grand Oaks Project, otherwise more commonly known as the Micro Homes Project on El Camino Real, just south of the former Key Mark property. And it's under construction next to the new Gather Market there on that little hillside there. And they're just beginning to build those small units on that property now. Really interesting project. So it was back on September 22nd that we did approve a resolution that we call the Intent to Annex Resolution and establish those annexation boundaries and set the date for what tonight, tonight's activity is, which is the actual public hearing, any actual decision on those annexations. And the property owners get to vote on that. Now, those boundary maps for those areas were also recorded at the county recorder's office. What I'm going to do in a moment is hand this over to our city clerk. And she's going to do the creative job of wading through that large number of recommendations. And I don't want to be overwhelmed by that big number of recommendations on the first page of the staff report. But in essence, there is a process. And we're going to combine these together a little bit. But Laura is going to help us get through that. But essentially, I'm going to go through what the process would be is it starts by the city council opening the public hearing, then closing the public hearing and considering the two resolutions. Then we have the landowner election held. That's where our city clerk will open the ballots and then announce the results of the vote. And then if affirmative, then we'll certify each of these elections and introduce for first reading the draft ordinance, A for Kerberell and the draft ordinance B for Grand Oaks. So at this point, I'm happy to answer questions about the general process or about those projects in general as well. But at this point, after that, I'd like to hand this over to our city clerk to do the formal side of the hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So I will ask if there are any questions from council for the staff. Councilmember Funk?
Yes, just one. There's a lot of public interest in this project, in the Grand Oaks Project, when we started that up. Can you confirm that the, that for the properties or at least the ones that are not on the front facing the live-work units, are units where the owners of the house will own the land underneath it as well? That they are separate lots?
I will confirm that. They are separate lots. They will actually be little tiny, what we call postage stamp lots. So the individuals that have those homes will have their own lots and they'll also have shares in a common lot, which is part of the driveway and everything else on that property, kind of like a condo, but different than a condo where it's airspace. They can actually own the land. It's a different kind of a concept. Small lot subdivision is what we like to call these. Very unique.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and open up the public comment period for both annexation items. But I will ask that we take public comment for each annexation separately. So I will start by working on annexation number 21, which is 7900 Kerberell Avenue. And Luke, I will ask if there are any callers or folks on the webinar that are wishing to speak on annexation number 21 for Kerberell Avenue?
We do not have anyone wishing to comment at this time on that annexation.
Thank you. And I will ask our city clerk if there are any comments that were received by email to be read into the record.
There were not.
Okay. So if there are no additional comments for annexation 21, we can move on to number 22. Annexation number 22 is 4711 El Camino Real, which is the Micro Homes Grand Oaks Project we're talking about. And Luke, are there any callers that are wishing to speak on annexation number 22?
We do not have anyone wishing to speak on this annexation either.
Thank you. And I'll ask our city clerk if any comments were received by email to be read into the record.
There were not.
Okay, thank you. So the public comment period is now closed. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve draft resolutions A and B, which are recommendations two and three. I have a motion from councilmember Funk and a second from councilmember Newsom. So the council is going to recess until the ballots are counted. And we'll now give the city clerk a moment to do that.
I'm actually going to go on camera so that anyone's looking if they can see. So here's the ballot for the first one. And we'll open the ballot for the second one. Okay, so for for annexation number 21, there was one vote cast and the vote was yes. And for annexation number 22, there were two votes cast and the vote was yes.
Thank you. Now, are there any council member comments? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve draft resolutions C and D and introduce ordinances, draft ordinances A and B.
Really, Heather, can we do a vote? We didn't do a vote on the first one, on A and B, on the resolutions. We had a first and second, but we didn't do the vote.
Got it. Okay. So we have the first and the second. It was councilmember Funk and then councilmember Newsom. So roll call on that, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Borbo?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Okay, so who was my first on C and D introducing ordinances A and B? Was that you, councilmember Funk? Are you the first on this, on C and D?
Councilmember Fonzie was first on this one.
Okay.
Second her motion.
All right, so great. So motion to approve draft resolutions C and D and introducing ordinances A and B. That is first by councilmember Fonzie, a second by councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
I need to read.
And actually, the clerk will now read the title of the draft ordinances. Thank you.
Draft ordinance A, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Atascadero, California, authorizing the levy of special taxes in Community Facilities District number 2005-1, Public Services, including certain annexation territory. Draft ordinance B, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Atascadero, California, authorizing levy of special taxes in Community Facilities Districts number 2005-1, Public Services, including certain annexation territory. Councilmember Fonzie?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Borbo?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you to staff for being efficient and putting those two together. I think that was a great idea to do that. So thank you. And so we all, thank you, Director. Appreciate it. So we have no management reports this evening. We'll move on to our one discussion item, which we have left on here just in case there's any conversation we need to have, updates to give the public, that things are running fairly smoothly and regular updates from the county and other places. So this is sort of our COVID discussion item. We are getting so close to orange. We're not there yet. Luckily, because we do so much testing, our numbers keep getting adjusted downward. But it's like we're right at four, we're right on that cusp. So we need to get below four and stay there for two weeks to get into orange. So most of you probably already know that. I will ask our city manager, is there anything that you wanted to share with us?
No, I think that is the big news is that we are right there at the cusp and we need to keep up the good work on testing and the spread rate. So that's good news.
Councilmember Fonzie?
Yeah, just a question for the city manager regarding what will be the difference between where we are and orange?
I know there's a long list. Go to the state of California on, let me try and pull up the website, but guidelines for an economic recovery or something along those lines. They have what is allowed for each industry. So restaurants will be able to open up more indoors. Every type of facility basically will be able to open with more people and more permissions inside. Offices right now should be virtual. They can encourage virtual and have more people there. So there's just a lot more capacity in each of the things that are open right now. But I encourage anybody, they have lots and lots of different industries.
But I encourage anybody, they have lots and lots of different industries. If you don't know what this means to your particular industry or business, I encourage you to call the county there and go to the readyslow.org website. They're very good at helping businesses figure out, you know, what comes next and, and how we can, how they, how we can move forward.
Thank you.
And I do know that the county is working with arts organizations to find out if there's some way for them to, you know, hold performances to somehow operate. The state keeps saying that they're going to get guidance out soon. And unfortunately, the, the soonness of the state doesn't always happen as quick as we would like it to. And sometimes the county is put into the position of putting together guidelines and then sometimes the state comes out three days later or something like that, but they are working on that. So that's good news. I would ask the city manager, is any thought to when we can actually start meeting in public again? Would orange get us there?
Orange, we, I'm, I'd have to look that up. I believe that we might be able to do something. Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Fonzie.
The question I keep getting Rochelle is when is the movie theater going to be opening? I know there's concerns that they may not make it and people are asking, has there been any movement in terms of them opening even at 25% capacity is, which is allowed?
I am going to have Phil answer that. Have you been in touch at all with the movie theater, Phil, lately?
I have not. I keep meaning to do that. I went to the movies myself on Friday with a very small group for a private showing. I thought that was a really nice opportunity. Anyone's able to do that right now. They're able to rent a theater for a hundred dollars and go with their family, which is really nice. But in terms of them fully opening, they have not given that information out yet. I think they're waiting to get, you know, to a level where it makes financial sense to hire back some of their staff and get the thing going. So I'll reach out to them shortly and find out more about that, but right now I have not got any information that's definitive.
I did speak with Frank Roomquist just a week or two ago and part of the challenge is that there are no movies coming out. So they've also got theaters in other states where they can open up and they've got more ability, but even there, it's not financially viable. So theaters are really, are really hurting right now, just not, not only because of the having capacity in the theater, but there's just nothing, nothing coming out of Hollywood. So that's been unfortunate. Any other questions, discussion items? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Rochelle. We will go ahead and move on to council announcements and committee reports and I will just kind of go, I'll kind of go from my bottom right up to top left. So I'll start with councilmember Funk.
Yes, I attended a meeting of the homeless services oversight council executive committee. And we had a number of discussion items, including COVID funding and we're trying to keep that moving along and moving rapidly into the hands of providers. Warming centers were also an item of discussion and we discussed two things. One is that, that there's a, the big news was that Echo in partnership with the People's Self-Help Housing Organization and HAPSLow was able to secure a state grant that matches with the heat grant that we may remember from about a year and a half ago, to purchase the Motel 6 property in Paso Robles and convert it so that there will be 40 beds of non-congregate emergency shelter there that Echo will manage, plus the rest of the unit will be, become permanent supportive housing that will be managed by the other partners. So this is a, a big increase in immediate shelter support for folks up here in the North County. I know we've been dealing with people who are in Atascadero and who have come there. I did also report to the executive committee that the warming center in Atascadero is preparing to open, that it has switched both the organization running it from TFS to Echo and also has its locations and that neighbors were raising concerns and that they, that Echo and the, and the host church were working to make sure that all of the concerns of the neighbors were addressed so that this could run safely and effectively. The executive committee is well aware that warming centers are very hard to locate and raises, raise anxieties and concerns in any location and this happens all over the county. But we're looking to how do these organizations learn from experience to, which, which we've done in here in Atascadero, to, to change the protocols and approaches to make it a better experience for both the persons who are sheltered and the neighborhood and host organization.
Thank you. Councilmember Newsom.
I'm just looking at my calendar. We have a busy week, the next two weeks. I have California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Board meets tomorrow. It's our annual board of directors meeting at six o'clock tomorrow evening. And then City of Atascadero Design Review Committee, councilmember Fonzie and I will be meeting next Wednesday, November 4th to go over Doug, Dove Creek Commercial Development, which includes a hotel on the property at Santa Barbara and El Camino Real. And that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Borbo.
I have no, no committees to report on because they were canceled this month. Prior to our next council meeting, we will have an IWM meeting that will be pretty important and I've described that in the past because it's about the strategic plan and how the IWM will function in the future. I have an announcement, not a determination, so I guess I'll do it here. Over the weekend, I was able to attend a tour held by the Beaver Brigade and go down to the Salinas River and check out a beaver dam. It was really very, very interesting and it's great to see all of the benefits of the beavers damming up portions of our river, the benefits that that provides to our, our river and our groundwater and our community. So very fascinating. If anybody has an opportunity to do it, I would encourage them to do so. Unfortunately, there was actually very obvious evidence that somebody had driven an ATV through the water and up onto the dam, the beaver's dam and, you know, did some damage to it that the busy beavers had already mostly repaired. But it's a shame that there are people out there like that, but it was a very, a very interesting thing and just another example of all of the great community groups that we have in our community because the Beaver Brigade's out there picking up trash in the river in addition to the annual creek and river cleanup that occurs every September.
Thank you. Councilmember Fonzie.
Thank you. LAFCO did meet. I wanted to let you know that they went through the EIR process for the gateway annexation, which is at Highway 46 and will involve motels, shopping, restaurants and others. And staff may want to take note that they are going to be using water from the Atascadero groundwater basin to provide water to all of those facilities, that there's water in a well that is called Thunderbird that is right there at the edge between Paso Robles groundwater basin and it's actually in Atascadero's. And so if there's concerns about this, this is the time for them to make responses to the city of Paso Robles. That's it.
Is there something that we should be doing as the city? Is the water company looking at this? What, what do you, I mean, as a member of LAFCO, what are you, are you making a recommendation?
Well, it'll be coming back to LAFCO to review the EIR. There were some comments made at LAFCO regarding that water from both Debbie Arnold and I with some concerns. We have 30 years of water that we're going to be fine, but on the 31st year, we may have to cut back because we reached sustainability. And so I think it would be appropriate for the city to consider contacting the water company and see if they have any comments and to put their two cents in pretty quickly.
Okay. And what is the deadline on that?
I believe it's going to be about 30 days or so.
Okay. Thank you. And I have no particular report. I've got RTA that will be coming up, EVC as well. I did get to play pickleball with Mayor Portem Borbo. He's played before, so he's much better than I am. This was my first time. And I got to do the creek cleanup. You've played twice now? Okay. Well, twice as many times as I have played, so that was significant. And participated in the lake cleanup together as well. So thanks to the friends of the Atascadero Lake for getting that together every year and of course for our public works department that does a lot to, to bring that to fruition and to make our, our lake such a beautiful place. So with that, I, we will move on to individual determinations, if we've got any of those. Seeing none, any from staff? No? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Where do we end up, Brian?
Fifth inning, bottom of the fifth.
Oh, man.
Phil Dunsborough wins.
Bye.